Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the January 17 Eugene City Council Work Session. Mayor Venice is with Counselor Evans and with...
Not with Counselor Evans.
Others, I think, right now, not with Counselor Evans, excuse me, back on the united front lobbying in Washington DC. And so as Council President, I'll be filling in for her just today. So we'll start at the beginning of our agenda and go with item number A, which is the follow-up we have for the motion on performance auditor. And I think I'll turn that over to Glenn to begin us out.
Thank you. I have a draft of proposed charter amendment that I'll hand out to you in just a minute. First, I wanted to let you know what I'm hoping to accomplish at this meeting. No action is being requested. Instead, what I will do is hand out this draft, walk through it with you, answer questions if you have any. You can have a conversation if you want to have a conversation. If there's any particular direction you want to give me as to how to revise it, you can provide that direction. There's another work session scheduled for next Wednesday on this, and it would be at that work session where we'd be looking for you to have more substantive debate and provide any direction as to whether you want to move forward with this, you don't want to move forward with this. If you do want to move forward with it, the plan is to bring you back then a resolution that would actually refer the measure that likely would go on your February 12 agenda. We will, depending on the direction that you give, if any today, I'll get this revised or we'll just attach this one to the AIS. That would be for next Wednesday. That will be available to the public, should be by Friday. So they'll have it in time for the weekend. And then if they want, they can come talk to you during your public forum on Monday. So let me hand this out. So what I've attempted to do with this draft is to take the provisions, the draft that you were provided by the...
Citizen's...
Thank you. That they provided to you. The provision substantively, this is intended to accomplish everything that that proposal was intended to accomplish. It's written in a different organization, similar to the way the police auditor provisions are written in the charter. But the intent of this, and much of the language of this, is pulled out of that proposal that you received from that other group. So I'll just walk through it with you. Broad overview of what's here. Paragraph A sets out what the policy is. Paragraphs B and C relate to the auditor, with paragraph B primarily being qualifications. Paragraph C being primarily the duties for the auditor. Paragraphs D and E relate to the citizen review board, with paragraph D being primarily qualifications. Paragraph E being duties. And then paragraph F is to make clear that this provision would control over any conflict with any other provision in the charter. Primarily, that might be Section 16 related to the powers of the city manager. And then another provision I'll talk about when we get there. So going back up to paragraph A, the policy statement is actually taking right out of the proposal from Citizens for Sensible Oversight. It would be the policy of the city to maintain a performance audit function, to provide the council, the manager and staff with objective, timely and accurate analysis and information. To accomplish that, the council would appoint an independent performance auditor and citizen performance audit review board, which are then described in the rest of these provisions. Paragraph B then says, provides that the council will hire, supervise, specify the salary of the independent performance auditor. The auditor must possess adequate professional proficiency as demonstrated by relevant certification. Must have at least five years of recent auditing, evaluation, analysis or comparable experience. Must remain certified throughout the term of office. The auditor must reside within the city throughout the term of office. So you could hire somebody who doesn't live here, but they would have to move here while they're in office. You may remove, you mean the council could remove the auditor, but only for cause. It would require six counselors to vote to do that. And you could only do that after you first received advice from the audit review board. Duties of the auditor. The auditor would be required to conduct or cause to be conducted performance audits and could conduct studies intended to measure or improve the performance of city departments and programs. And they would have to use generally accepted government auditing standards. All of the audits would have to be provided to the council and the city manager and would have to be posted on the city's website. The council would have the ability to create policies and determine the budget. And when I say policy, that would govern the auditor. And here, there was a question, I think Claire, you asked it, about whether the, like, the council's policies related to sanctuary cities, how would that apply? This provision is intended to say the council can adopt policies that would actually govern the auditor, would govern the auditor's ability to hire staff. So for example, you could decide specific requirements for the auditor in hiring staff in terms of their qualifications and processes. You could decide you're going to require the auditor to use the same processes that the rest of the city uses for hiring and things like that. This also says that the ability of the auditor to hire staff and other consultants would be limited by whatever budget that you appropriate. So subject to those policies and budget appropriations, the auditor could hire, supervise and remove employees for the auditor's office. The auditor could prescribe the duties and compensation for those employees. And in addition, the auditor could retain consultants to assist with an audit. The next sentence is intended to make clear that these employees are all independent of the manager. And specifically says that both the auditor and other staff in the office of the independent performance auditor are independent of the city manager. And paragraph F reinforces that. And I'll describe that when I get down there. Finally, the auditor will have timely access to all city employees, information and records required to conduct a performance audit, including confidential and legally privileged information, so long as privileges aren't waived and that no state or federal law or regulation is violated. An example there is if the auditor decided to undertake an audit of some of the activities out at police. Some of their records are regulated in terms of who can look at them by federal law. So if federal law doesn't allow somebody outside the police department to look at it, this is just making clear that we're not going to ask the police department to violate their federal requirements by letting somebody who's not authorized to actually look at something. But that kind of information would be very rare. Paragraph D then starts talking about the citizen performant audit review board. Council must appoint one. The board would have two functions. One would be to advise the council. The other would be to advise the auditor and to oversee the work of the auditor. The board would consist of not more than seven voting members. There's nothing magical about seven. I put that in there in part because that's what's with the civilian review board on police. But you can decide it could be less, it could be more. It says seven voting members to make clear that if you decide you want to have other people on the board who wouldn't be voting, you could do that. In terms of the voting members, none of them could be city elected officials or staff. So you might want to have either the city manager or some staff to be non-voting members. But in terms of who gets to vote, couldn't be elected or staff. And then this picks up from the proposal that you received. At least one of those voting members would have to be a resident from Ward 2 or 3, one from Ward 4 or 5, one from Ward 6 or 8, and one from Ward 1 or 7. And at least one voting member shall have experience auditing or accounting. In terms of what the board would actually do, paragraph E would require that the council specify the responsibilities of the board. But at a minimum, the board would advise the city council on the selection, compensation and dismissal of the auditor, the appropriate amount of budget and staffing for the auditor's office, the auditing principles and guidelines that the auditor would use in conducting the performance audits, the auditor's proposed annual audit plan and, on an annual basis, the auditor's performance. The board also would provide advice directly to the auditor on the plans for each audit, would review the completed audits for quality assurance purposes, and then provide other advice to the auditor if the auditor requests it. So those would be the minimums. The council could certainly add to those minimum responsibilities. And then finally, paragraph F. The first part of that makes clear that to the extent that any of these provisions conflict with Section 16 of the charter, these provisions would control. And then if there was a question that arose as to the meaning of any of these provisions, you could authorize the auditor to retain outside legal counsel to get a second opinion to provide advice on that question. Again, my intent in drafting this was to take the objectives and the provisions for, from the Citizens for Sensible Oversight. If something seems to be missing, that was just my mistake. It wasn't intentional. With that, if you have questions about what's here or what's not here, I'm happy to answer them. Or you can just have whatever conversation you want to have.
Thank you, sir, very much. Questions from, I've got two of you in the queue so far here. Anybody else? Ellen? Jennifer? No? Okay. Let's start with Emily, called by Betty.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to dismiss this project. I move to terminate all work on this proposal for a second performance auditor measure and that we do not refer a competing measure to the May ballot.
Second.
Got a first and a second. Okay. Discussion. I'm going to start a new queue now.
The motion gets first chance.
Would you like to, as is your right, would you like to speak to that first?
Sir, I'll speak to it. I've been over most of the reasons at the last time that we spoke to this. I think it's a dangerous precedent. Anybody could work up a proposal and then expect us to put it on the ballot for them. I don't think it's fair that this competing measure knew about the original measure since April, but didn't bring it forth to us until the first meeting of the year. And they had plenty of time. We've had plenty of time since 2002 to write our own measure. And we didn't really even think about it until this one came forth. And it wasn't until after they actually got enough signatures that we knew about this other group. I think we need to respect the people and how hard that they worked on this and that they spent years of research. The mayor's ad hoc committee looked at many cities, but there was really no recommendation or determination of what worked in each city, how happy they were with it, what sorts of things they found. So I didn't really find that very useful. So we have so much to work on. This is so late. We have to take every paragraph apart because this is no longer coming from the people. It's coming from the city. I don't think we need to continue this process. We have so many things to work on. I get calls quite often about the rats.
Thank you. Again, I've started a new queue and Betty is second and next to this.
Thank you. So this is now a city proposal, which is outrageous that we, the citizens came up with a proposal. Now we are making a different proposal, saying we don't like what you did and we will do ours now after all these years. We did discuss this once some years ago and voted down. Only three people voted to go ahead with plans for an auditor. But since then, we haven't done anything. And now suddenly, we're saying, you did all this work, but we don't like what you did. And instead of letting people vote, if we don't like it, we can vote against it. But we should vote on the one that the citizens came. And I wonder, Glenn, who asked you to work on this?
The council did last week.
So, but in the meantime, we are not, we've been told that there's not time to work on inclusionary zoning, the nuisance code. There are many things that are waiting to be done. And we keep being told that the staff doesn't have time to work on them. And suddenly, there is time to work on this competing measure. I think that the Register Guard editorial made a good case when they said that it was better not to vote on auditor light at this time. If the citizens' proposal fails, then maybe we'll be motivated to get to work and come up with our own. But this is not the time to do it. Thank you.
Claire?
Thank you. I'll be voting against this motion. I believe that what we are doing today comports with the process laid out for a ballot measure. This is part of our democratic process. The folks who put the measure on the ballot knew that there was a process for a competing measure to be brought forth and that this kind of debate might ensue. So I think it's perfectly proper for us to be having this discussion at the council table, whether or not we end up referring something to the ballot. I believe it actually invigorates the whole conversation and that the conversation should be allowed to continue.
Anyone else? Ellen?
Yeah, well, I respect all the work that the folks have done that put together the original proposal. I do think there's significant problems with it. And if, maybe if they had done an open, transparent and public process, maybe a lot of this could have been avoided. I think this is a proper process. It's all laid out perfectly legitimate how these things occur. And it's totally within the council's purview and actually the obligation of the council to respond to citizens' requests to do something. And so I agree with Claire that this does make the conversation a bit more robust. And I think the competition of ideas is a good one. They'll be competing proposals about how this should be going forward. I think there are several things that the alternative proposal fixes, mainly the exorbitantly high cost. That's a zero-sum game in this budget. But the really high cost of this auditor that's locked in no matter what. The salary of the auditor, which would be the highest public official, one of the highest-paid public officials in Oregon. There's no residency requirement. They could be anywhere. They could, they could, there's no requirement that they be part of the community at all. I think that's hugely problematic. There's no accountability mechanism. And their method of election, kind of a backdoor way, changes the way that we do some of the elect officials. So I think what the Citizens for Sensible Oversight came up with is an alternative that deserves us looking at it. We have not decided to put this on the ballot, but this is the first cut. They asked us to put it into form, basically, after giving us the outline of it. And this is what we asked the city manager to do. So this is in direct response. And it's not, it's in a format that's more akin to city code as opposed to the way a citizen group would write it. And that, to me, is the fundamental difference between what they gave us the Monday before last and what Glenn has here. There's a lot of other rationale and other kind of responses in the other document that Citizens for Sensible Oversight gave to us that doesn't need to be in an ordinance. So having them ask us to put it into form, I think is the appropriate way to go. So I'll be voting against on this motion.
Anyone else? Betty, second round two.
Thank you. In response to what Ellen has said, the salary is not necessarily locked in or the budget. We can always put something on the ballot as council. If we and the public think that it's too much or the wrong kind, we just recently put something on the charter. The council can do that without gathering signatures. And it would be an easy thing to change. As for residency requirement, I don't think we put that in the contract for the police auditor. And it's just obvious that the person would live here. They wouldn't, if they were hired to do a job here, they would live here. That is, it's not, that's just a distraction, I think. And citizens have, as for the citizens asking us to do this, citizens have asked us to do lots of things, sometimes with many signatures. And we have ignored it. Every time people come in, it maybe depends on which citizens, but we have gotten signatures over the years from 100 people. And we didn't do anything. We just ignore it. We don't, it maybe it depends on which people. But for this time, they said, we want you to put this on the ballot. And we're talking about doing it. And it was not a huge number of people. They were no more important than the other people, than the thousands of people who have asked us to do the other thing. Thank you.
Emily would like another round and then Ellen.
Thank you. If we, the voters think that the auditor's not going to live here, don't vote for him or her. There is a review, a peer review, every three years from other auditors. I think this is a very powerful statement as opposed to, okay, well, other people said what they thought was wrong with it. So I don't think we should keep going.
I'm going to allow a broad conversation here on this so that everybody gets heard. I'm not going to rule it out of order. You want to finish?
You can finish what you're going to say then.
Thank you. Giving tremendous power to this oversight commission. They don't have, they're not all auditors. They don't know all this stuff. They're private citizens. I think that's a huge mistake. Why don't we just have a citizen auditor committee? Who's going to decide how much money? Who's going to decide how many people? How big is the office? If it's us, that gives us tremendous power over what the auditor can do. There's just not, it's not independent. It's too involved with staff and manager and council. If we want independence to see what is going on with our government, we need to let that person do their job. Thank you.
Ellen?
Yeah, well, I personally would rather not put a flawed measure on the ballot. I'd rather fix it. And I think that's what we're trying to do here. I think, maybe Glenn, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but all senior staff are required to live in the city of Eugene? And the city manager?
If by senior staff you mean department heads, yes.
Yeah, execs, including the police auditor.
I can't recall whether the police auditor is. I'd have to check the charter.
Yeah, I believe that they are required to live in Eugene, too. I'd have to check, too. So there is a staff requirement that all major department heads and the city manager live in the city of Eugene. I think the same should apply for this individual. If they want to live somewhere else, then they can be the auditor there. So Betty, the fact that we reacted to citizens' requests to put this alternative forward, you're right. We didn't always do it, but sometimes we actually responded quite often to what citizens have requested. The whole opportunity village and rest stops and dust the dawn, those were all grassroots from the citizens. And we moved those forward. We don't always do it, but often when they're good ideas or things that need to be changed or fixed, we listen. And that's what our job is as city counselors. I agree that the budget here section needs to be beefed up a bit. I think it's a little deficient. And I guess there are differing opinions of what independent means. If it's, if there's only one version of independent, there are various ways to do independent auditors. The police auditor position we have is an independent police auditor. It is not under the purview of the city manager. And I think it works exceptionally well to keep it independent of the police department and the city staff administration. And it does a very good job of being independent and moving that forward. And I think that's the model that this alternative should be patterned after, is the independent police auditor, which actually Bonnie Bettman and Andrew Ortiz put together. It was their proposal to have the police auditor the way that it is. I think if it's good enough for that, it's good enough for this auditor, this independent performance auditor as well.
I'm going to jump in with a question and a comment, but then I have Claire for a second and Betty for a third round. Number one, Glenn, is this, I assume from the reading of item F on here that this is proposed as a charter amendment consideration?
Yes. So yes, this would be Section 15B of the charter is the way I've drafted it. The police auditor is Section 15A. So this would follow that section.
I guess as a comment, I would say it is my opinion, and my opinion only in this case, that I think a part of why we're having this auditor discussion is because some people feel, and again, just my opinion, that counselors don't do enough to speak to the staff or to do things that they wish counselors would do or wouldn't do. And I will say that I have made motions from the input of very few citizens because that's what I believe the counselor's right is to do. And they hear something from citizens of any number that they think is a reasonable and good idea. It's not just their right to bring it up at council and make a motion and try and get their colleagues to support it. I think the inverse is also their responsibility, that if they're hearing citizens and nobody makes a motion, that's the counselor's job to bring it up. And that means nobody at the council table felt that strongly about it, to take the lead and make a motion and ask the council to act to put something either before the citizens for a charter review or to create an ordinance. And so for me, the argument that we haven't done stuff when some people said one thing and we have done, acted when other people said things, the end of the day, the beginning and end of the day is with the counselors that have the responsibility to act or not and the right to act or not, to represent people the way they think they should. And I, that argument doesn't work very well for me. But I will tell you that I will vote in favor of this. The reason I'll vote in favor of this is because of the same things I've said all along. I have concerns about the idea of the city having an auditor. And I don't think, I think if the council were, if we were all doing the job that voters wish we would do, I don't know that there would be a public desire for an auditor. That's just, again, my personal opinion. So I have Claire for the next second.
Well, maybe my comments are moot, given how the chair has indicated he will vote. And I apologize for interrupting another counselor. I'm just frustrated when we have a motion on the table and we're not actually speaking to the motion. We're speaking to future motions we intend to have. So I have lots of opinions about the auditor proposal that's on the ballot, the one that we may or may not continue to discuss. But I will limit my comments to the motion, which is the ballot measure proposal has raised a lot of questions about this model. And other members of the public believe there is a better way to institute an office of an independent auditor. They worked on a draft that they brought to us. Counselor Simple could have done the same thing. Counselors Bettman and Brown, when they served on council or after, could have also used that form. used that forum in order to put forward their measure. But they chose instead to craft their measure in private and gather signatures on it once they had finalized the language. And now they believe that we should only vote on their version, leaving those who believe that there is a better form should either be cast as anti-oversight or seek another way to put forward another version, which is what they chose to do. So I believe councillor Clark articulated very well, there are times when we are petitioned by the public, whether it's individual members of our wards or the public at large, to take up a topic, and we have an obligation to act upon that and see if a majority of council is willing to also take up that topic. And that's what I believe we are engaged in today.
Before Betty's third round, Jennifer, did you want to comment at all? Okay, Betty?
I want to make a correction. I didn't say that we never respond to the public. We have never before talked about putting something on the ballot, a charter amendment, that the public wanted us to. This is quite different from responding to public requests. And as far as Mike saying we can talk to staff, we really can't tell staff what to do. And we cannot do anything about personnel, hence that trying to control personnel decisions, which are, so the auditor would have power to reveal things to us and to the public that we don't have the power to even comment on. As far as our, we have discussed this before when councillor Bettman was on the council, and at one point she and David Kelly and I voted to go ahead with plans for an auditor, and we were voted down. So it isn't true that never have we discussed it, it was a long time ago. Thank you.
Emily for a third round.
I forgot what I was going to say.
Let me ask the procedural question of Glenn here while you're thinking, and I'll come back to you if you do. In this particular case, where usually the mayor or the chair does not vote unless in case of a tie, what occurs while the mayor is gone and a councillor sits in her stead?
You vote as a councillor. And if there's a tie, then the motion fails.
That's as I thought. Thank you. Go ahead.
I would like to remind council that in December, we had a majority to not bring this back up. Nobody on council thought at that point that there was enough time or importance to continue with this. And it wasn't until a citizen group that really wasn't public brought their motion forward. So I don't think that's a fair criticism, and I'd just like to remind us that we change our minds an awful lot, and I'd like to be able to rely on what we say. Thank you.
Before I ask for the vote, Jennifer? All right. So would you like to restate the motion?
I move to terminate all work on the second proposal for a performance auditor and not refer a competing measure to the May ballot.
Okay. All those in favor?
Sorry, sir.
All those opposed? Measure dies for a tie vote. I'm going to go back to the original queue that I had when we started this, as having Betty next in the queue. If you would still like to speak, we have 10 minutes on this item.
I'll pass for now.
Okay. I have Claire next in the original queue, if you would like to speak.
Thank you very much. So thank you, Glenn, for preparing this draft for us. So my hope for this draft is, I believe that modeling it on the successful implementation of the police auditor position, which as Alan pointed out, was set up in part with this work of Bonnie Bettman and my predecessor, Andrew Ortiz, would be a successful model for us to use for the creation of this office. I believe the police auditor office has been functioning very successfully without undue interference from the council in terms of the police auditor choosing what issues to pursue, what policies to make recommendations regarding, and the other tangible elements of his work. So I also think the more we can include specific provisions that provide for how the office conducts its work as an independent and transparent a manner, the better. So Glenn, if there's any elements in here from the police auditor's charter amendment that you haven't already thought were appropriate to put in there, that might be relevant in terms of creating work plans, the role of the review board, and the oversight of the office by that employee, that would be beneficial. And I want it to be clear, which you pointed out, but there's one detail of the employment piece that I wanted to ask you about. So I want this office to follow all required city employment practices, and in my mind, that would include the inclusion of, if the job class fits, for employees to be members of AFSMI. And that was an issue I had with the measure that's going to the ballot, that it specifically says that all the staff in that department will be Atwell employees. And so I don't know what the situation is for our police auditor's office, and how that intersects, because I recognize that we also, down at the bottom, say this office will be independent from the direction of the city manager, and the city manager is the one who conducts negotiations with the union. So can you speak to that?
I can give you some brief information now, and then I can follow up with some more. So in the police auditor's office, the deputy police auditor is exempt, nonrepresented, and then the other staff person is a member of AFSMI. The way this is set up, the council would have the ability to say that either the employees should be part of whatever the appropriate union would be, or you could choose to say they should not be part of that union. At that point, I then need to get advice from a labor attorney to say whether, under state law, that's even possible. Because state law controls how unions work, and state law may say, actually, if the city of Eugene has, for example, AFSMI, and the city has a function that falls within the work functions that have been prescribed for the AFSMI union, it may be that state law says, in essence, notwithstanding the charter, the person has to be in there. That's where I'd need to get you more information, because that's outside of my area of expertise.
Okay. If you could do that, that would be great. And my goal would be that this office, in terms of its employment practices, follow as closely as possible with other employment practices of other city departments. And those are my questions right now. Thank you.
Thank you. I have four people in the queue and six minutes on the clock for this section, but I think this is important, so it's up to everybody else, but I think we should go a little bit longer on this. But we do want to leave time for an appropriate length for STU discussion. I have Alan next.
Yeah, a couple of questions or comments. In paragraph B, auditor may be removed from office only for cause. What does cause mean?
I want to follow up.
What's cause of anything?
It means, let me just follow up. I will, before your meeting next week, or either as part of the AIS or for that meeting, I will have a definition for you.
All right. In paragraph C, which really delineates the responsibilities and the work of the auditor, I think there's two parts that we'd want to think about, three parts that we want to think about. About in the middle, it says, "and retain consultants to assist with an audit." How broadly construed can consultants be? For instance, would it also include legal counsel, independent legal counsel?
It wouldn't, because paragraph F speaks specifically to legal counsel. So paragraph F says, if the auditor has questions, legal questions as to what this means, that the council could authorize the auditor to go obtain legal opinions. And because there's something specific on legal counsel in paragraph F, consultants up above would mean other than legal counsel.
So this does allow legal counsel to, independent legal counsel from the city attorney for the independent auditor?
Yes. That's the intent of that last sentence in paragraph F, is if the council says, yes, go get outside legal counsel, you could authorize the auditor to do that.
Right. So if the auditor believed that the city attorney's office had a conflict or couldn't provide an unbiased opinion, then they could go and ask the council for the ability to get independent opinion.
Correct. Or if the auditor didn't like the opinion of the city attorney's office and wanted to get a second opinion, you could say, yeah, sure, go get a second opinion.
All right. This also, in paragraph C, conduct performance audits to ensure and prove the performance of the city government following generally accepted general accounting standards. So how far does that go into the financial aspects of the audit, of what they're being audited, what they're auditing? So the contracts, and how much people are being compensated for, or how much things cost, or how far does that go in terms of the definition of performance audit, including a financial audit?
So my intent in using that language was to put in here what the Citizens for Sensible Oversight intended to do, and so I was just picking up their language. The council, if this were referred and passed, the council would have broad discretion to interpret what that word means, because it's not a legal term. It would have to be consistent with the standard, the generally accepted government auditing standards. So you couldn't say, okay, performance audit includes something that those standards would say would not be a performance audit, but outside of that, you can interpret that term. If what you wanted was to ensure that financial audits were also included, then my recommendation is we just add those words. And so what would be authorized would be performance and financial audits, and then that removes any question.
Actually, I'd like to see that change we made. This also constrains, one of the problems with the original proposal is that it's super broad. It could mean anything, LTD, EWEB, federal government, anybody has any connection with the city could be audited. This constrains it to just functions of the city and the departments that we do.
That is certainly the intent. And again, if there's any question as to whether, I mean, it clearly doesn't include anybody outside of the city and EWEB. It was written so that it would not include EWEB, but if anybody has any question about that, it would be really easy to insert the words, the city not including EWEB. And then nobody could make an argument, if this passes, that EWEB's included.
I actually don't have a problem with including EWEB, but other entities, I think that was way, way, way too broad. So I do agree that we should constrain this to, or include financial audits. The last, I have two more comments.
Want another round? You're 13 seconds?
I'll just say what they are. One revolves around the budget, and the other one revolves around the formation of the citizen performance audit review board.
Jennifer?
Okay. Well, thank you, councillors Linka, for asking almost all of my questions and saving this time. So the only thing I have left is, it doesn't, and maybe this is what Alan was going to touch on, it doesn't actually say how the citizen review board will be made. Is there like a standard way we always do these, and so that doesn't need to be included? Or is that something we'd have to work out later? Like, where these seven people come from? Like, who picks them?
It says that you shall appoint, so the city council shall appoint the board. Chapter two of the code talks about boards and commissions and establishes general processes where you recruit people. This would be an overlay on top of that general process in the sense that you would have to choose at least one voting member from these two wards, one from these two wards. Other than that, it would be the, if you didn't add something more in here, it would just be the code process set up in chapter two that talks about council appointing.
Okay. I just didn't, okay. But, thank you. That's all I have.
I have four in the queue for the second round. We're at time under regular order, but we're just going to go on here. Emily?
Thank you. It's my understanding that the auditing of other organizations such as EWEB would merely be their interactions with the city. We would not be auditing the entire EWEB or the entire federal government. The certifications for the auditor, a relevant certification, that's very, very vague. The things you need to have to be auditor, I don't think are strong enough to get somebody who's really going to work out. And since we just got this version, and they're different, I would like a legislative copy with all the changes from the first one to the second one, because that's a lot of time for me to go through them all and figure out exactly what's different.
So if you mean first one, you mean the one?
I mean the one we're looking at, the copy that, the alternative measure that was given to us and yours. I want to know what changes were made.
So it's not possible to produce a legislative draft, because what I actually did was take parts that might have been at the bottom of page two, and something in the middle of page two, and something at the top of page one, and put it into one paragraph. So I can't produce a legislative version. I can provide something that would show you, here are the provisions that either verbatim or paraphrased, I actually lifted and put in here somewhere. But in order to do, when I think of a legislative version, it's like, it's this, and then it shows underlining and strikeouts what's different, and I can't do that because I didn't use the same organization that the Citizens for Sensible Oversight provided.
Well, can you give me a synopsis of which things aren't the same? Which, anything that got left out, or anything that's different?
The original proposal, not the Citizens for Sensible Oversight.
I'm talking about the one that's before us now. I'm not talking about the one that's already on the ballot.
You're talking about what's different with this and this?
Yeah, the one's much longer. So what's left out, what might be added, I think that's important.
So the only, so the pieces that, the significant, the big pieces that were left out would be places where the proposal had said things like such as, so here's some examples. So under responsibilities, and so this would be, let's see, so it'd be their subsection two, citizen performance audit review board, under little b responsibilities, there are a bunch of bullets of, here are types of things that the council could determine would be specific responsibilities. Because those are examples of things, I left out a lot of those bullets. And that's at the bottom of page one and the top of page two of theirs. And then in the purpose section, I left out some of that language that they had that talks generally about things. Beyond that, all of the substantive provisions that they had in there, my intention was to incorporate them into this. So substantively, what they attempted to accomplish, I believe this does accomplish. My expectation is that, and they haven't seen what I drafted, you were the first ones to see it, that they will see it after this meeting, and that they will provide information to you at public forum Monday night as to whether I actually left things out or not. And so they might be able to provide you with, okay, here's what the city attorney's office missed in their draft. office missed in their draft. But my intent was, anything that was a substantive requirement, to actually have it in what I gave to you.
Well, I still feel the need to put them side by side and check that out, I guess, which is going to take even more time. Thank you.
Eddie?
Thank you. I think it's wrong we're wasting time discussing this, and I think it's wrong that city staff are working for this group at this point, instead of working on things that we've been delaying for a long time. But my question for Glenn, if both of these, if it looks as if council's going to decide to put this on the ballot, unfortunately, if both issues should pass, what happens then?
So the city code actually speaks to that, whichever one receives more yes votes, assuming that they both pass, then whichever one receives more yes votes takes effect.
So they, and it would pass if it got more than 50% of the vote, is that right?
Correct.
So they could both pass, and then it would depend on which one got the most?
Got the most yes votes.
Then this is, this is called sensible oversight, and yet I don't see what's sensible about giving huge amounts of power to a committee that the council appoints. Everybody knows when council appoints a committee, it's really political, it's who has the political pull to get appointed frequently. And it's an awful, and there are no qualifications listed that I see for the members of that committee. They could just, it could be anybody who wants to be involved. And that, and yet this gives them great power. I think that's really dangerous. It is, it certainly interferes with the independence, and it, the council then has power over it, which we should not have, over an independent auditor, because through the kinds of appointments we make. And I would be very concerned about that if this passes, I'd be very concerned if it passes at all, but, or if it even gets on the ballot, but I think that we should certainly look at the power of that committee. Thank you.
I'm going to interject and say that while I agree substantively with my friend, Councilor Taylor, about the wisdom of the people or the council considering this construction of this issue, I will say that technically, the city staff is working for the majority of council, because we voted five to three to authorize and direct them to come back with this material. And I wouldn't want the public to be misinformed that somehow staff is working at the behest of a particular citizen group, when they are in fact responding to a majority of council to give them what they asked.
Mike, if I can add one thing to that?
Yes, sir.
Which is that not only are we not working for them or with them, I've had, I haven't talked to them, I haven't emailed them, what you received from me today has not been shared with anybody outside my office.
Thanks, sure. Claire?
Thank you. So Glenn, I'm wondering if in Section A, it would be appropriate in the list of that first sentence to provide the city council, city manager, and city staff to add, and the general public to that list? I know later we make a provision for posting audits on the website, but I think that would be, even though we represent the public, I think that'd be a good addition. I agree with Councilor Zelenka, I'd like it to be clear that this office has the ability to hire outside consultants, including CPAs, investigators, whatever they believe is necessary to carry out their work. Access to records, I know this was an issue when we first established the police auditor office, and I'm hoping that we now have clear language, I know you've included some language here, about the powers of this office to access records as needed, and the ability to audit contracts. And I also agree that they should have the power to conduct more than just performance audits if they believe that that is needed and part of their work plan. And then in terms of budget, there's very little discussed in here, other than, as I see in the Oversight Committee discussing an appropriate budget. I wonder if, again, it would be appropriate to include language that, and maybe again up in A, to accomplish this policy, the city council shall appoint an independent performance auditor and Citizen Performance Audit Review Board, and allocate sufficient dollars, I'm not sure of the exact proper language, but sufficient dollars to carry out the work of the office.
Adequate budget?
Excuse me, adequate budget, yeah. So, and, you know, I was looking through the city, excuse me, the citizen panel piece, and I actually don't see them empowered to do a lot more than play an advisory role, help guide the creation of the work plan of the auditor, and ensure that the plan is followed. And I think those are very important roles for citizen oversight that are notably lacking from the ballot measure that will be on the ballot. And just a few general comments. In my analysis, the ballot measure that's going to be on the ballot now essentially creates a new government agency, completely removed from city infrastructure and policies, with the exception of being entitled to city tax dollars without having to be subject to the Budget Committee process. So my intention is refer a proposal that creates a new city office in a form that conforms so closely with our traditional budget process, and would have a relationship with the rest of city government that is less of a departure from expected norms than what the ballot measure that is currently on the ballot is going to create.
It's three minutes to one, I'd like to move us to the next item, I have Alan and then Emily.
Yeah, a couple of things. I agree that the certification provision should be increased or strengthened, I think there's some language in the, that the Citizens for Sensible Oversight had in here that kind of short circuited. I think maybe beefing up that section would be a good idea, so that's clear about what the qualifications need to be for someone to be the auditor. And second, I think in Section E, where it talks about the budget, I think it does say an appropriate amount of budget and staffing for the auditor's office, but I think there needs, that needs to be strengthened, too. I think that that needs to, I think we need to have at least a minimum budget, so, and I'll have to think about that some more, but a minimum budget, I think it would be at least a salary commensurate with other like offices in other comparable cities and counties and government, so that, you know, the salary gets based on a salary survey, and that's, and plus benefits, and then a certain amount of staffing, and then consultant budget. So I don't know exactly how to put that together, but I think that, we need to have a, that section needs to be beefed up a little bit more, so that there's a minimum budget. So I don't want a future council just to say, we don't like the auditor's office anymore, and therefore the whole office is done for $50,000, which doesn't cut it, it won't, you won't get an auditor and that functionality for $50,000, for instance. So I think there needs to be more there. The, in Section D, which is the accountability and review of the auditor by the, by the Citizen's View Board, it says not more than seven, more why it didn't just say seven or five? I mean, do we, is that common? I mean, we have a lot of boards and commissions, I don't remember what they all say, some of, I know, a lot of them say there shall be this many.
Generally, they do have a specific number. The citizens' proposal didn't, and so I just picked up the language that was in the police auditor one. You can say it should be seven, you can say it should be a different, or five, right. That's completely up to you, and you can give that direction next week.
Yeah.
That's an easy change.
Right, that's what he said, forward. And then final comment related to the pairings of the wards, two, three, four, five, six, eight, one, seven, apparently what the folks from Citizens for Sensible Oversight were doing was, it was, that's just pure geography. Two and three is southeast Eugene, and four and five is northeast Eugene, and one and seven is the middle of Eugene, and then six and eight is the east, or west Eugene. So I think that's probably fine, just wanted to kind of think about that a little bit, if that's the right way to do it, geography seems to be appropriate. I'm kind of wondering how E-Web does it, is this the same as E-Web does two and two?
Time, Alan.
That was my last one.
Emily, as the last one?
Thank you. Mike, also have a question about the way the wards are put together, I think that's strange. I'm really concerned about the powers given to the commission, they're going to look over his plan, the fieldwork plan, so they basically have power over what and how they want the auditor to work on. And whoever decides the budget, I guess that's us, is really powerful, because if we don't give enough money, that limits what they can do. So, and what is adequate as far as money goes? I know council doesn't have to, and often doesn't take the advice of its commissions, but still, having that report is an awful lot of power for citizens who are not auditors and don't have experience with this auditing process. So I think we want an independent auditor who can work independently, and I worry that this proposal gives too much power both to us and to the commission. Thank you.
And that wraps everything up for this item, thank you, sir, very much. And now it's time to move with half an hour left to Item B, local implementation of legislation related to secondary dwellings. And I shall turn it over to our capable staff, when everybody's seated at the table, who's coming for this one? Robin's coming up here, Catherine's coming, okay.
Okay, great.
And take it away.
All right, great. All right, thank you, good afternoon, my name is Alyssa Hansen, I'm with the Planning Division, and I'm here today to provide you an overview of some recent legislation related to housing affordability. Specifically, I'm here to talk about a new provision in state law that's about accessory dwellings. And just so we're all on the same page, an accessory dwelling is known by many names, we call them secondary dwellings here in Eugene in our land use code, they're also referred to as ADUs, SDUs, granny flats, mother-in-law units, backyard cottages, and the like. Basically, it's a smaller home on a lot, it can either be interior to the primary home, it can be attached, or it can be detached, but it serves as an accessory or secondary function. So this, now I'm going to dive a little bit more into the details, the Senate bill in question is Senate Bill 1051, and this was approved by the state legislature last year and became effective in mid-August. It includes a number of provisions that are intended to facilitate the development of housing and, you know, to address housing affordability, includes a number of things, including requiring that we expedite permits that are for affordable housing, that we allow religious institutions to use their property to develop affordable housing, and it changes the definition of needed housing, so it is all housing. And today, we're going to talk about the provision that requires cities over a certain size to allow accessory dwellings in single-family neighborhoods. We believe that this is the only provision in the Senate bill that requires us to make changes to our land use code. So in your agenda item summary is the text of Senate Bill 1051 that I'm referring to, I'm going to go ahead and read it out loud for everyone's benefit. And it says that "A city with a population greater than 2,500, or a county with a population greater than 15,000, shall allow in areas zoned for detached single-family dwellings, the development of at least one accessory dwelling unit for each detached single-family dwelling, subject to reasonable local regulations relating to siting and design." So when you kind of analyze that, there's really two parts to it. The first is the where part, where do we, should we, must we allow accessory dwellings? And then the second is the how part, and that is subject to reasonable local regulations relating to siting and design, that's how we get to allow them. Also important in this Senate bill is that this particular, for this particular provision, we have to implement it by July 1st of this year. So that's an important date to remember. In terms of this, the language itself, although I think the intent is pretty clear, we do know that there are cities that don't even allow accessory or secondary dwellings, so this is to make sure that all cities allow them, and, you know, that the standards aren't so onerous that you actually couldn't build any. But I think what we and other cities are struggling with really is the vagueness of the language, it's not entirely clear, it doesn't provide clear directions in kind of many regards. What is reasonable, what is related to siting and design, what are areas zoned for detached single-family dwellings? And in Eugene, we have long allowed accessory or secondary dwellings, especially in our R1 low-density residential zone, and then we also allow them in a handful of other special area zones that have residential sub-areas. And these are subject to standards relating to height, size of the structure, setbacks, lot size, parking, and a myriad of others. And you may recall that for the R1 low-density residential zone, these standards were changed recently, actually in 2014, and the intent of these adopted changes was to provide greater protections for neighborhood livability. So since the adoption of the Senate bill, we've been, we've been talking to a lot of people, we've been kind of monitoring what other cities are doing, knowing the vagueness of the language, and we've also talked to the state, the Department of Land Conservation and Development. And what we are hearing from cities is that they are struggling a bit with the vague language and, you know, and determining where to allow them, and then more in, you know, what is a reasonable standard relating to siting and design? And then in talking with the Department of Land Conservation and Development, early on, they had indicated to us that they were considering proposing or sponsoring or suggesting legislation that would add some clarity to this. So there is an upcoming legislation, legislative session that starts in February, and at one point, they were proposing to add, to provide some clarity through that process. I did just speak with a staff member from the state yesterday, and at this point, it sounds like the only thing that they are involved with is a clarification that actually deals with county lands, so nothing about the cities. However, he had heard from other cities that were contemplating working with the league or working with others to try to get some more clarity in some of those provisions. We've also been hearing from a number of interested parties, and I think it's a lot of the same people that you've been hearing from individuals and groups, and not surprising, there's a broad range of perspectives about this particular topic. You know, we do live in a community where housing affordability has definitely been identified as a major issue, and I think there's some fairly broad agreement about that. Missing middle housing types are also, you know, a topic and have been since at least last year, and those have been identified as a potential tool for addressing housing affordability, and accessory dwellings are actually considered one of the missing middle housing types. We've also heard interest from some in reevaluating our land use code and permitting processes to identify and remove barriers to secondary dwellings. We've also heard that there is concern that if we make any changes to the secondary dwelling standards, that we will, that will result in a loss of protection or livability in neighborhoods. I, you know, I think the good news is that we have a lot of caring people in our neighborhood, and so that balance of maintaining livability and providing housing affordability, I think those are really widely shared values, and so finding a way to knit those together is going to be really key here. So based on what we know, we believe it's prudent for the city to take some action to implement the Senate bill before the legislative deadline of July 1st. That being said, we're also very aware that our community highly values both housing affordability and neighborhood livability, and that the community conversations on these topics are really, they're still evolving, they're emerging. I mean, just, you've been getting letters even, you know, as early as this morning, there's some upcoming events, like the Better Housing Together Summit that's in, or February, you have a work session next month on housing affordability strategies and missing middle, there's a lot of conversations going on about these topics. So we think we've come up with a way to implement the Senate bill that is both responsible and responsive to these conversations and interests. It will allow us to take action by July 1st and not It will allow us to take action by July 1st and not get in front of these emerging conversations. So, and it's a phased approach. Kind of briefly summarized in your agenda item summary, but Phase 1 really addresses that where piece. Where do we need to, you know, look at our regulations and allow secondary dwellings to be built? And this first phase would begin after council initiation, which I'll get to in just a second, and it would really consist of pretty limited changes that are solely aimed at compliance with those requirements about where secondary dwellings would be allowed. This would be accomplished again by the July 1st deadline, and the existing standards related to height, setback, et cetera, would all remain in effect. Phase 2, then, would be the how piece, and this is really where those community conversations are happening, and it would begin following Phase 1 and consist of review and possible update of our existing standards through an inclusive community process. Again, this would allow those emerging conversations around housing affordability and livability to inform those potential changes. And it's going to take a little longer, so that's, again, why we want to get the first phase done and then move into the second phase, giving it the time that it needs to percolate and, and result in something. In terms of next steps, so because these do require a change to our land use code, an amendment to our land use regulations, that requires city council to initiate such a process. So we're intending to return on Monday to request initiation and also give, if you need more time to discuss, that would be the opportune time for that. City council initiation, it begins the public process. It doesn't mean that you agree with the changes, it doesn't mean you support the changes, it merely gets the ball rolling on the formal adoption process. And so for changes to the land use code, the formal adoption process begins with a notice to the Department of Land Conservation and Development, then that's followed by a planning commission public hearing, and then planning commission meets to make a recommendation to provide to you. There's a city council hearing, and then ultimately, city council action. And that, I think I'm going to leave it at that, and I am here for questions.
Awesome. Comments and questions? I've got Emily and Betty, and then Alan. Emily?
Thank you. I think this is going to help us a lot. I hope it is, is smooth and not a ton of time. It's interesting how the long process is to change this in our zoning, but we can change our charter pretty darn fast. Is there a deadline for the second part of the siting and design of the change?
So the whole, everything, I mean, the way it's written that the Senate bill would need to be implemented by July 1st of, of 2018, we're going to continue to rely on our existing standards until, until we have new standards, assuming we do.
Well, we have to have those before July 1st.
If we continue to rely on our existing standards, which is what we're proposing to do, that gives us additional time.
Then after that, we can have the public input.
Right. We just, I mean, as it stands now, to go, to adopt new standards by July 1st or have them into effect, I, I think we'd make pretty much everybody unhappy.
I agree with that. I think that the siting and design is going to be really important, especially with our interest in, in livable, livable neighborhoods, and that that's different in different parts of town. So I'm encouraged that we're going to have a lot of input on that. I am not all that familiar with zoning. I would like to have a map of where these R1 changes will be, and I'm also curious as to what the other zones allow as far as SDUs. I realize they're not part of this change, but I don't know what they are.
Okay.
And I'm hoping there's SDUs in other places besides.
Well, there are, I think, I have to pull it up. There's, I think, five or six special area zones right now. They're, they're pretty small, these zoned areas that allow for secondary dwellings. And I would be honest, we typically don't see them in these neighborhoods, and that's Chambers, Chase, downtown Westside, Royal, which is out in Bethel, Whittaker, and Walnut Station, which is over by the University of Franklin.
And so would those potentially have a different siting and design rules?
Those have slight, they each have, so that's where, those are the zones where they're currently allowed.
Right.
And so they each have just kind of a variation on a theme, but they have similar. Usually, they're limited to 800 square feet or less. There's just some design standards like those.
So I'm curious as to what R1 actually says, what R2 actually says.
Okay.
I mean, I could look it up, but.
Okay, so in terms of what's allowed, so right now.
Yeah, what they say now.
Right now, secondary dwellings are only allowed in R1.
And, and what's the different parameters of R1, R2? How many Rs are there?
Okay, there's, so R1 is our lowest-density residential. R1.5, which we're not talking about because that's row houses and those are attached, and this is all about detached, single-family, so, but just so you know. And then there's R2, which is our medium-density. R3 is limited high, and R4 is high-density.
And I suppose I could look up what that actual density is?
Yes.
So Alyssa, so for example, R1 is generally single-family.
Generally, single-family.
R2 might be?
It can be single-family, sometimes there's duplexes, sometimes there are garden apartments, and so there is kind of a spectrum.
So you can't put the row houses in R1?
You could sometimes put row houses in R1. In fact, you could have multifamily, but you'd have to go through a planned unit development process. But it's typically, if you were just to look across the city, R1 is typically single-family.
Detached. So you, do you have a map of R1, R2, or 3s?
Yeah, we have a zoning map online. I'd be happy to send you the link to that. Also, I have a great interactive tool if you want to look just at your neighborhood, so.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay. Yeah.
Is that it?
Yep.
Thank you, Betty.
Thank you. I'm just, I'm confused, since we already allow secondary dwellings in R1, why do we have to change anything?
Well, we do believe we need to allow them in some of the other zones that are predominantly single-family, and we know that there's a lot of community conversations about whether or not, you know, I, I think there are folks that think our current standards aren't reasonable, and there are folks that think our current standards are very reasonable, and I think that that's, you know, worthy of a conversation in the context of this.
But we already allow them in R1?
We do allow them in R1, so.
We aren't compelled to change anything, then, are we?
We're not compelled to, I mean, we don't have to change it because they are currently allowed. I think this provides us an opportunity to look at the development, the standards, to ensure that they are reasonable.
But we don't have to do that before, since we're already allowing them, we don't have to do that by a certain time, do we?
We are going to rely on our existing standards until we're able to, you know, until the second phase.
Which means we don't really have to change anything right now.
Well, if, if, we can have Lauren from my office come up, or Alyssa, if you want to speak too. What is the change that you've determined that does need to be made regarding the where component?
You know, the where component is that we would be adding them as allowed use in agricultural zone, which is a single-family holding zone. We'd also allow them in R2, medium-density. It's possible we would allow them in the R3 and R4 zones, and then there's another, a couple more special area zones that have kind of single-family or medium-density housing areas where we think they should also be allowed. So those would all require amendments to the land use code.
And I think the state law requires us to be looking at those kinds of things, so we're not proposing to move forward now because it's discretionary, that the whole thing's discretionary. There are pieces that we actually have to take a look at by state law by July 1st, and that's the, the piece where I suggest to me look at as part of Phase 1. Is that correct?
Have to look at what now?
I agree. So Counselor Taylor, may I, may I jump in?
This is Lauren Summers. She's a, an Assistant City Attorney with the City Attorney's Office. Thank you, nice to be here. So Senate Bill 1051 requires that cities with population of greater than 2,500, which is us.
Got that, yeah.
Allow, in areas zoned for detached, single-family dwellings, these secondary dwelling units. And R1 is clearly an area zoned for detached, single-family dwellings. We already allow single-family dwelling, or secondary dwelling units there. But we have some other zones that are, we think, count as areas zoned for detached, single-family dwellings where SDUs are not currently allowed. And so Phase 1 of this process is us complying with state law to make sure that under our code, SDUs are allowed in areas zoned for detached, single-family dwellings, which includes more than R1, and that's what was required by the Senate bill.
Well, this would not affect R1, then. Would affect other areas.
Phase 1. Correct. Phase 1 would not affect R1.
Thank you.
They are allowed and will continue to be allowed.
Is that it? Thank you, Alan.
So the difference is, the, the legislation doesn't use the language "R1." It says.
Or low-density, or.
Yeah, it says areas where single, detached, single-family dwellings are, and that doesn't, that's more than R1, which is why we need to make changes.
That's correct.
Yeah, so R2, ag, some other places. So I, I agree that, this is an interesting one because it's, it's about house, housing affordability and missing-middle housing stuff that we're, we've agreed that we're going to take on and look at. At the same time, there's the neighborhood livability issues that are, I think, going to come into conflict. And, and, and a good example is the university area special area zone study that we're doing. And if you recall, the majority of council put into place interim protection measures that disallowed secondary dwellings, or they disallowed, not secondary dwellings, but.
Alley access. Duplexes, triplexes, row houses, and they do have specific standards related to secondary dwellings.
And so how does that get impacted by, that interim measure get impacted by this?
I mean, that'll be something that we'll be looking at as part of Phase 2. So in part of Phase 1, you know, they're allowed in R1, but I think it's something that would be part of the Phase 2 conversation.
Okay, so, yeah, SDUs are allowed everywhere in that special area zone?
It's zoned R1, so yes.
So, yeah, so that'll be, it's interim, by the way, because we thought we would be done with the urban growth boundary about two years ago, and so this interim thing has been going on for about five years. Supposed to be way done by now. That's why they're called interim. I agree with Emily that the design and siting parts of this are going to be very, very important. And, and, and some of these conflicts that are going to occur, I think are going to be in that Phase 2 where we're going to start talking about. There's a lot of people that have interest in having, neighborhood livability doesn't include all these different kinds of redevelopment within, and more density, and, and so I think that's going to be interesting to hear how people come out on, on that. There's also a whole bunch of other stuff in this bill. That was all in paragraph 1 here, or paragraph 2 in the background. Facilitate affordable housing, expedite affordable housing permits, define needed housing, and then allow religious institutions to develop their property. When's all that going to come back to us? Does that have any deadlines on it?
So that has, most of that's actually already in effect and doesn't require us to make changes to our code. The timelines, we already rely on the statute. The definition of needed housing, we rely on the statute. So most of those, I don't think any of those, based on our review of it, require us to make any changes.
Oh, okay, because we were, we already complied with all the things that are.
Or we just continue to rely on the statute itself.
Any change. We said we do the statute, statute changed, so the statute follows, okay? Who, who actually created this bill? I know it says support from 1,000 friends and home builders.
I know that it came out of, is it Representative Kotek? This, I think she's the speaker.
Yeah.
It came out of her office originally.
Okay.
But it, I think it had a lot of, a lot of people touching it, because the original one probably had about 12 issues instead of six topics, so maybe more. It was, it was a dense bill.
Done?
Yes.
Thank you very much, staff. I appreciate all the work on this. I want to, I'm going to insert myself here and say that I'm hyper vigilant on this, on this issue. It was, I think, barely more than two years ago when we had the whole R1 card, code amendment process, and I brought a motion that caused a little bit of a discussion at the table about SDUs and about alley access at the time. And for me, I really, really have a, a lot of passion around affordable housing. But what I don't want to do is for us to alter the definition of R1 and to have kind of a backdoor way of inserting those R1 amendments we did from two years ago back into the process with new politically correct language around the idea of, you know, missing-middle housing and, in the process, degrade quality of life for our communities. So I'm going to be really hyper vigilant about us not changing density standards by, by, you know, that was one of the issues before with SDUs, was the size of lot, and there are a number of others that are going to be really important to me about this discussion because, again, the whole piece is, yeah, it's great if we can create more opportunity for people to have greater freedom to do things that might help, but this isn't a huge number of dwellings we're talking about in any of this alteration, number one. And number two, I don't want to alter the protections for R1 zone. It's the only zone that protects the individual homeowner and the individual dwelling on low-density residential. You can build multi-family housing on almost every other zone, but this is the only one that protects the individual home, and I want to make sure that we're not chipping away at that in the interest of, of flexibility here or doing things that we don't have to do by state law. And so I was listening very carefully to what we actually have to do versus what some people are suggesting we do, because I'm, that's another piece I'm going to be listening for as we go along. I, I guess I will say to wrap this up, this, this is a conversation where I wish, in my perfect world, in my best outcome, we'd have at the council table a conversation about what we all think R1 is and ought to be, and why, and then have the conversation about what we do about that. But that's just my opinion. Anybody else have an item on this issue?
I just want to say one thing, and I, I hear you and I completely understand your position. One thing I would do want to say, because that language is vague, there, it is very well that it will be interpreted through, say, the Land Use Board of Appeals, or it'll be clarified at legis, the legislature, so we may have, you know, be told how we're going to implement it at some point, that it's not clear right now what will happen with it, so I just, I want to put that out there. Do you have anything to?
Thank you, everybody, for a good meeting. With two minutes left to spare, we're going to adjourn for the day.